I'd like to call to order the August twenty-sixth regular meeting of the
The Park District four commissioners, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation, in the visual, with a reason, and justice for all.
Roll conference. President Todd?
Here.
Vice President Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Antier?
Here.
Commissioner Jenner? Commissioner McBoom?
Here.
Commissioner Ruffing?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah.
President Todd?
Okay. If I could ask, the events that happened today with, I think it was thirteen soldiers that were lost and overseas, if we'll be okay with the board having a moment's silence to honor those fallen soldiers today?
Okay. Thank you. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor from the public, I don't have any.
There's no mayor from the public, so we'll move to the consent agenda.
Item three point one, approve August twelfth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Three point two, approve August twelve, twenty twenty-one executive session closed meeting minutes. Three point three, approve ordinance one zero zero five authorizing gifting agreement between the beneficiary of the Frank Russ Trust and the Naperville Park District. Item three point four, approve resolution twenty-one dash oh six, a resolution to name the property commonly known as ten South nine sixty-six Knagnals Road, Naperville, Illinois, six zero five six five, as Frank Russ Preserve at Knagnals Park.
Are there any items to be moved to the consent agenda?
Move to accept consent agenda items three point one through three point four?
Second?
Second. Vice President Gibson?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Antier?
Yes.
Monsieur Jenner? Commissioner McBoom?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruffing?
Yes.
President Todd?
Yes.
All right, move to current consent agenda items three point one through three point four? Second?
Thank you. And this is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Finished business there. So move to the new business, the special discussion, change votes.
I do have one comment in public on that agenda item.
Okay, let's read that into the board.
This is from Julie Anne Berkowitz, Will County Board Commissioner, District eleven. Unfortunately, I am out of town and will not be able to attend the Naperville Park District meeting on Thursday. I would like to submit my comments regarding the agenda item discussing the possibility of hosting Ripfest Festival at Frontier Park. The area adjacent to Frontier Park includes many unincorporated neighborhoods and several large subdivisions. In this area there is very heavy vehicle and pedestrian traffic from the local schools, Ninety-Fifth Street Library, and the Naperville Community Plaza Park. There is also a dense concentration of businesses within the area of Ninety-Fifth Street and along Route fifty-nine. I would like to request that a special public meeting be conducted with residents and business owners to discuss the logistics and impacts of such a large event in South Naperville. Surrounding neighbors and businesses should have the opportunity to present comments and questions regarding hosting a large multi-day event in their backyards. Traffic data and attendance levels from prior Ripfest festivals should be made available at this meeting to accurately discuss how to address traffic mitigation. It would also be appropriate to provide parking requirements and shelter needs that will be required during the event. Other items of concern is the storage and parking of refrigerated trucks and other vehicles and equipment that will be needed to supply the vendors at Ripfest and provide necessary services to run the event. As a longtime volunteer at Ripfest, I know that even regional bands can draw a large crowd from attendees from long distances. For the safety of all, we need to communicate with residents and businesses and take time to address any questions and concerns. None requested.
No, just an email that I forward.
All right. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening. First, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Val Chapman, the twenty twenty-two Ripfest chair. I've been a Naperville resident for over twenty-five years. I followed my parents here and our girls so they could attend the great school. Diane Simmons is also here with me this evening. She's lived in Naperville for over forty-five years and has raised her family and continues to do so. She still has a couple on payroll. And she's a past Ripfest chair and a twenty twenty-two entertainment chair. Trish Karnick is here this evening as well, and she's the club president, who has been a resident for over twenty-seven years, and her children graduated from Naperville, of course. So, we hope you've had a chance to review the slides. The packet includes our mission statement, and that mission statement includes the prevention of child abuse and domestic violence. It also promotes Americanism, and it gives back to our community. Ripfest twenty twenty-two, an application has been submitted for a three-day event at Frontier Sports Complex for the last weekend in June, which was one of the dates the park district staff provided us. We want to return to Naperville where we've had a successful thirty-year relationship with the city, the park district, and city services. Suggested with a basis, it was suggested that we assist Salute, which we were able to do, providing hundreds of volunteers, manpower, hours, thousands of dollars of equipment, as well as volunteers. We reached out regarding a potential future partnership as well. In addition to that community impact, we have assisted the JCs with Last Fling for several years. We have given over twenty-five million dollars back to the community, including over fifty allocation groups, of which the majority are local. We're happy to provide more details on groups or amounts if it's beneficial to the commission, or to understand the huge impact we've had on the community. The packet does include some letters from a couple of organizations. We established Project Help in nineteen ninety-two. Project Help is a nonprofit. It assists parents with their parenting skills. It improves the family unit and the quality of life. They are a recipient of a large portion of our allocation budget. Edward Hospital Care Center also provides a calm and caring environment for children, teens, and special needs adults who were or may have been sexually abused. It's also at the top of our allocation list. At our allocation luncheons, Dr. Randala gives a speech and thanks us. We're always all in tears at the impact that unit has had on this community and so many people. You will note that we also fund the Crime Convention Calendar, summer lunch programs, as well as scholarships. We have an adopt the family program, where we provide gifts and coats during the holidays for needy families. On the Americanism pillar, the club is a parade participative participant and has a nine eleven memorial. We're able to give further back to the community by paying some of the volunteer groups, which include all the local high schools, the bands, the sports teams, honor societies, scout troops, et cetera. A letter was received from a Naperville Park District swim conference participant sharing the impact Ripfest has had on their club. Sorry about that. We've provided an economic impact to the area, when people traveling to attend Ripfest buying gas, staying in hotels, purchasing food, and other incidentals. The city continues to receive recognition and awards for the quality of life in the exchange club, and Ripfest's allocation has continued to provide an impact on families needing assistance to retain the high standards the city has achieved. The Ripfest sponsorship team seeks local vendors and sponsors and is really excited about the prospect of returning to Naperville. So, after meeting with the park district and some of the stakeholders and their recommendations, we are requesting to move forward with a two-day event, although three days gives us that little weather issue that we are always afraid about, on June twenty-fifth and June twenty-sixth at Frontier Sports Complex. The two-day event is challenging because our logistics costs do not decrease. We are mindful of the concerns that the park district has on their facility. At Ripfest twenty twenty, in twenty twenty-two, the community would be able to enjoy the carnival, family fun area, and rivers, and all the exhibitors with no entry fee. We would have a single stage for the concert each day. The part of the park that is free, which would be the western side and the parking lot, we would close that park early. We normally close the family fun area at dusk, and we would be closing the carnival and the rivers before the end of the concert to help with the egress of the park. The concerns that brought up to us were potential turf damage and safe evacuation. We're addressing these concerns from the concept CAD, which we provided, which is very preliminary, to the CAD that I just received this afternoon, so I apologize it wasn't in the materials. I believe you each have a copy, and as you can see, we've moved the carnival, the rivers, the family fun area off of park district property and onto parking lots in District two oh four property. We've worked with District two oh four on evacuation, hoping to use Niqua and/or the freshman campus as those options. Our intent would be to have a quality, safe, and fun event which benefits the community, as well as the nonprofits who desperately need assistance. Thank you for your time.
I had, I had asked for an in-text statement from the park district, which everyone, got a copy of, of what the impact is to the Frontier Sports Complex. That is our largest complex, and it, it would significantly impact programs that we can provide over that period of time because it, even though it might be a two-day event, it takes approximately six weeks for the setup and the take down and everything. So, I guess I'm, in, in an effort to try to get to some conclusion on this quickly, I would just like to get some input to the commissioners on where their thoughts are on this whole thing, so.
When are we, are you looking to take action tonight, or going to teach your?
Oh, we're just going to look at the census tonight.
Okay. Uh, did I, I've heard the executive director of the year is emailed, so I'd like for the record, just hear your thoughts.
I think, you know, I'm not one that tries to dodge questions, but I'm not going to dodge this one. I think that the board needs to, Ripfest asked to speak to you as commissioners. I've provided the information that President Todd asked us to provide as a staff. I think at the end of the day, you know, just, you know, read it for the record, we provide recreation and park experiences, promote healthy lives, healthy minds, and healthy community. If you feel that Ripfest contributes to that, and as a form of, we'll allow Ripfest, victim of Ripfest, but I don't work for Ripfest, I work for citizens of Naperville in this commission. I'll take direction, and I will execute whatever plan that's best for the community, but I would hope at the end of the night here that I would have some direction to go back and say, hey, either get with Ripfest and start creating a plan, bring it back to us, or don't create that plan because we're not interested in that plan whatsoever. How disruptive is this to programming, like, would we?
Well, if you look at the memo, for day camps are affected, and there's approximately a hundred fifty participants that could be affected by the day camps, with potential loss of about twenty-five thousand, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, uh, sports camps. There's twenty-two sports camps that could be affected. That's about three hundred twenty-five participants, probably loss of about thirty-seven thousand dollars. There's, we have multi-day tournaments that come into play. We have cross, there's twelve lacrosse fields that are affected, two hundred and fifteen teams that are, will be affected. That's approximately three thousand players. That's, that's another big thousand, a rental to the park district, whose, there was lacrosse tournament during that period of time, another thousand players, hundred games. Let's see, there's a second lacrosse tournament for rebound, that's a hundred and ninety games, eighty, hundred players, which that thousand dollars would have been. I'm just finishing my breath.
Yeah. So, overall, and as you mentioned earlier, Frontier Sports Complex is our largest complex that we operate from. So there are a number of recreational amenities at that complex that are used for drop-in use by the community, as well as is programmed pretty extensively throughout the course of year. As it relates to the board, there are a number of programs that just based upon, just historically, and working with an event of this size, with Ripfest being at Knagnals Park, we know that it does have impacts to the ability to access some of the areas, sports fields, so on, both during the time when setup needs to occur, and then, more importantly, during the time that, after the event, when restoration needs to occur on turf. So we looked at that. Frontier Sports Complex is a park that we have been programming for years, really since it was developed. It is home to one of our two day camp sites. We know that with the setup and take down, that at minimum, we would need to relocate that camp for about two weeks, just with not having the park alive, as well as the other amenities, and not having kids around when that type of setup is taking place. The sports camps and miscellaneous programs that utilize the field spaces, depending upon the amount of area used by the event, would impact those. And we know that, just based on past history with the event at Knagnals Park, that after the event, it can take a hordes of four weeks after the event to restore some of those areas, based on the impact of the turf. So, there are certainly impacts from a program standpoint. As President Todd pointed out, there are a number of tournaments that take place at Frontier Sports Complex. If this, that were to occur at this site, the tournaments, the lacrosse tournaments that are typically held in July, based on the size of those tournaments, we do not anticipate that we would be able to hold those, again, not knowing what that turf condition is going to be after the event. We would not want to commit to a tournament organizer and then not be able to provide the fields.
The other thing I'd like to mention is that Frontier Sports Complex is probably one of the, we maintain that at a very high level of maintenance, I guess. It's, it's at the second only to the, to the Riverwalk. So, the impacts of any tearing up of turf is significant, because people come to our, you know, our facilities because of the condition of our, of our fields, and that they, they know that they're in good shape. If it starts getting torn up with, you know, the activities of something like Ripfest, that could impact further down the line, and it takes significant amount of effort to repair it, so.
Is the impact to the turf itself, is that lessened with the two-day? I know we had that around a three-day versus a two-day event, and I assumed maybe correctly that that was more just for crowd control and things like that, but is there a significant impact to approving, say, a two-day event versus a three-day event?
Well, there's a number of factors. It's, it's the amount of setup that occurs on the turf, so what types of vehicles, equipment, setup is actually on the turf, the number of people that are actually on the turf during that timeframe, as well as weather conditions. Black weather, weekend, and you have a lot of rain, then the impacts of the turf is going to be greater than if it's a weekend or a summer. So, there's a number of factors that come into play. A two-day event, you know, certainly can have a lesser impact, but if it's also a large-sized event, you know, the impacts will be significantly.
Well, I'll start, if no one else wants to. I think that our mission is really to the community of Naperville, and to provide recreational opportunities to the community, and this is our largest park, and it would have significant impact to our programs. So, I, I don't see that we should be moving Ripfest. Ripfest is a wonderful festival, but I just don't think it belongs in Frontier Park. I think the impact to our community and the people that we are serving as commissioners of the park district doesn't warrant that we should be looking to provide a festival on that deal.
Yeah, you know, I, this exchange club's a great organization, making great stuff for our community, and.
Okay. Oh, I'm done. Sorry about that. I think this exchange club's a great organization. They do a lot for our community. The charitable work is impressive, and their donations are really important to a lot of organizations. I'm appreciative of that and recognize it. So I have to look at this in the lens and responsibility of a park commissioner. And I've carefully reviewed the documents staff put together, and the impact, potential revenue loss, impact on our largest complex, and the format of what we're looking at now from the exchange club, format, the location, the time, the middle of summer, you know, our busy season for that facility. I just think it would really hamper our ability to fulfill our mission, providing services and programs. And I just, I keep going back to our mission statement, and I worry this will hamper our ability to stick to our mission.
Josh?
I echo everything everyone's said about the exchange club and Ripfest. I've worked with it many years, and charity work is, is great. I, I have trouble with revenue loss, potential revenue loss of our programming, and especially after what we've been through, what we could be going through again. I would be wary about supporting something that would cause revenue loss for the district.
Allison?
Yeah, so I, I've looked over all the emails that came in from various organizations, and I can see, you know, what great benefit Ripfest has to a number of communities. That being said, I have a sneaking suspicion that the neighborhood is not going to appreciate having a giant festival dropped in the middle of their laps, just based off of a few emails we did get from residents there. As a lifetime Naperville resident, I grew up here, and I knew the sentiment of Ripfest when it was near Edward Hospital, was they did not appreciate it being over there either. So I have that to consider, because those are the people whom we are representing, the people of Naperville. That being said, I did look at all of the various emails, the pleas, and everything like that, but in good conscience, I can't take one of our largest parks, our largest park, out of commission for that for six weeks, like you said, in busy season.
Rich, your opportunity. Rich?
Oh, sorry, Brad.
That's fair.
I'm, I'm, you hear me okay?
Yes.
I have a question that Josh brought up about revenue loss. Could Brad, or could Brad at this point quantify what the, what the potential revenue loss is, if you take both lacrosse tournaments off, and some of the other things, a different, a fair question or not, but if we come up with a back-of-the-envoled calculation on what the revenue loss might be?
Yeah, that was in your memo. I just said it.
Did you clarify that?
Yeah, Brad's right.
So, overall, looking at the potential impact to various programs, camps, camp programs we're unable to meet, the tournaments within the month of July we're not able to meet, it could potentially be upwards of ninety thousand dollars in revenue if we were unable to use the multi-purpose fields for that length of time in order to be able to do setup, hold the event, and then have a recovery afterwards.
Sorry, so ninety thousand dollars, round, round out the conservative, let's say it's a hundred thousand dollars. What are the, what are the Ripfest organizers projecting as, as a profitability in terms of how much, how much does the event will, will make at the end of the day, if you split out to the different charities? The, I'm not sure if the representative's still there, but what, what are they projecting over the two-day event as the, as the profitability? Because I'm trying to determine if the, the profitability of the event could somehow make the park district whole on the hundred thousand dollars in revenue loss, as well as make the park district whole on what would possibly be, you know, damage to the turf or whatever, if you say it's a hundred thousand dollars all in. Is there enough profit from that particular event for the, for the, for the event to make the park district whole on a hundred thousand dollars? Is that, is there someone from Ripfest that can answer that question?
We obviously don't have, we can't get to the one right, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer.
There is no, yeah, hold on. I think the other thing, Rich, is, is the number of participants that won't be able to, you know, participate in the tournaments, that, you know, several thousand participants that are just going to be with.
No, I, no, I fully understand all that. Just looking, initially at the dollars, I'm sorry, for the dirty answer, maybe just because I'm on the phone here, as far as what the budget projects for Ripfest would, would generate this year, if it's a two-day event.
So we haven't put our budget together, because we were waiting to see, obviously, a two-day versus a three-day, and the footprint the park district gives us, but it would be great if we could make four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars and give back to these organizations, so they can continue to save children and provide the services that they provide. And I, I just, I cannot tell you how important it is that we have a successful fundraiser, because there's organizations that are going to go out of business, and we haven't been able to help them for two years. And it's important to the community, and the community, I know you're going to get complaints. I live in Hobson West, so if people complain, you would also maybe people that love it. There are people that have traditions of Ripfest. They go every year, they have people come from out of state, and I think we're never going to make everybody happy. I'm never going to make all of you happy, you're never going to make all the citizens happy. But there is, I feel, a large majority that would prefer Ripfest to be here, that would carry on their family traditions, that would love it, in addition to the nonprofits that we support, which made Naperville who it is. So, and we were trying to listen at the last meeting, move the stuff off the turf, you know, we'll do whatever we can, working with the park district, and, you know, Rob is really crediting all work with him, he's really good. We'll do everything we can to lessen the impact on the park district and the neighbors and everything else, but we really belong in Naperville. We are in Naperville Club. We support Naperville, Naperville organizations, and I just really think we belong here.
President Todd, that would be, President Todd, I would be supportive of, let's try to figure this out, with the following conditions. I mean, we've already went from a three-day to a two-day event, at that, you know, at staff's recommendation. So I would be supportive of trying to make it happen. I think, I think events bring communities together. I think that impact to the local nonprofits in the community is that. But the conditions, you know, number one, I think the park district would need to be made whole on the revenue loss, and that's for our taxpayers. So, since Ripfest, though, I give back, I would propose that ninety thousand or a hundred thousand, that that amount comes back to the fee assistance program for Naperville park district participants that can't afford our program, so that when the money gets billed out to charities, somehow a hundred thousand dollars makes its way up to five hundred thousand, as they're projected to make. A hundred thousand dollars of that makes its way back to the park district fee assistance program, which would considerably further our mission. And then secondly, you know, I would direct staff and our legal counsel to try to cut down on that setup, you know, as much as reasonably possible, and likewise, to, to work on the layout of it, to minimize the, the impact, the potential detrimental impact to that turf as much as possible. So, you know, in short, I think, you know, this is the best place probably for Ripfest. uh, this is the best place probably for community or Riff Fest. Uh, I think the park district should step up, uh, and do it. And I think, uh, you know, again, with those, with those conditions.
Thank you.
Ma'am? I'm sorry. So I'm sure you've vetted out the location. At one point I heard something about Romeoville or...
So after we lost, um, our contract with Neighborhood, a committee, a committee did go and search venues and they had a contract with Romeoville. We obviously didn't have it because of COVID in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Um, we've since learned there's a lot of challenges in Romeoville and as an organization, we never really wanted to leave Neighborhood. So we thought since we had the two-year break, let's come back. You know, I reached out to Ray. We met with him a couple of times and tried to like listen to their concerns and do whatever we could to get back here to make this work for us. You know, I don't want to impact the park and, you know, I know Salute is having potentially an, an event as well and, you know, we'll continue to support whoever we have to support. They've offered to support us. They want to have a conversation. So, you know, I, I just think that it should, I agree. Um, thank you, Commissioner. I think it should be here and I think we should all work together to make sure it happens and reduce, you know, we'll, we're, we can try it on constant logistics. Maybe we don't have to be six weeks worse. We're, it's a smaller footprint. We're not having the logistical challenges that we had in our park with the sleeves on the fences and the buildings and it's more of a, you know, rectangle. So there, and we're going to stay on the parking lot. We won't drive the semis onto the turf. Rob, we were building any roads. We're trying to do everything we can to lessen any damage and impact to the park district. And I get it, my kids, they play soccer there. They swam here. Diane's still playing tennis here. So we understand the importance of the park district, but I also think that it's important to the community to have this. We, we support, we have so many community members who have a great time and have fun. And so I just, I think it's really important to the community to, to continue to give back, which is what Riff Fest does.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruffin?
Thank you. Earlier, there were a lot of good points made and so I won't echo those, but I definitely, um, agree with a lot of things that were said. I'm also really sympathetic and sensitive to, you know, the obvious passion that goes into this, to this, to this festival. And I, you obviously do amazing things for the community. Um, I'm a huge Riff Fest fan. I've been to many, so, um, but, you know, speaking as Commissioner Ruffin, it's just, it's so hard for me to get past just the huge effect on the park district after speaking with staff and such. Um, um, you know, I, if this was the consensus, I would be open to, and if this was even a feasible thing, for more community, um, you know, outreach and engagement on this, especially with the neighborhoods that are very close to that area, you know? Getting the park district and the city and 204 and the library and the Riff Fest folks together in a way that they can gauge the public to, to just to really gauge the interest, right? Because I know that there's a, a lot of people in the area who enjoy Riff Fest, but I also know that there's a lot of people who would hear about this happening here in Frontier and have a real problem with it. So, a, as of, you know, this is the first time that we've all been able to sit down and talk about this. So that's one reason why you all are here as well. Um, I know that, you know, this can be frustrating. Uh, but, um, you know, that's where I am. I'm just, at the end of the day, I'm having just a really hard time, you know, and, and I, and I know that you've said that you, you guys have worked with us and such, you know? It's just such a big, it's just such a big footprint for, in order for you guys to be successful and, and make money and, you know, enough to, to give back. It would just, it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big undertaking, so.
President, I'm talking to Andrew at the end of my call, so I'm hearing a passionate voice and kind of talking out of my heart a little bit. And I, it doesn't sound like you have another option. I, I want to help and, um, you know, kind of feel bad only thinking about dollars and cents. So I, I am worried about the revenue loss. Um, you know, Commissioner, uh, Janer's suggestion, if there was a way, I don't know, make this whole, but, uh, somehow, um, you know, contribute to, to some of the costs that the, the park district might have to incur. Yeah, I would, I would be open to that. I mean, um, you know, charity's important. I mean, your mission's important. Um, our mission's important, but their mission's important too. So, um, I, I would be open to this. Something like that could be worked out if we didn't just have to completely absorb a ninety or a hundred thousand dollar loss. Um, if some revenue sharing could happen, uh, with the exchange club on the profits. Uh, if something could be worked out along those lines, I, I would be supportive. I do think it's important.
Yeah, Commissioner, I'm, the money and potential revenue loss is obviously really important, but I also don't want to overlook the programming, dropping participation, summer camps, tournaments. I mean, it, it's more than just our revenue. We provide recreation and, you know, outdoor opportunities for the community and I think this would have a big impact on that.
Commissioner, answer.
At this point, I'm not sure what else to say. I don't know what else to say at all. Um, again, between my head and my heart is all the same, you know, I think the impact, uh, obviously the, the need for the charity fundraising of Riff Fest is, is very important. I'm not going to diminish that at all. Um, we've already talked about the impact on the community, both financially and just the loss of use of the area, not only for the pay programs, but just, you know, recreationally in that. Um, so, I mean, I would, I would, I would love for it to work out. I don't know that I can say it would affect your park, at least not in this particular direction. Um, but something for sure, I could hope could get worked out in some way.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand where you stand on this.
I'm saying I don't think that right now Frontier Park is, is the right place. I would hope that we can figure something out.
Okay. I, I think that the consensus then is that we would not, um, support Riff Fest at this point in time. That is our largest park. Um, you know, you can come back with more proposals, but I think that at this point in time, our answer is that we should, um, continue our mission and provide our services at that park to our, to the community and, uh, Riff Fest just doesn't, uh, play a role in it. But, um... Thank you. Thank you for the question. All right. Thank you, everyone. Point two, administration building. IT server room cooling.
Yes, so as, uh, Omar identified at the July twenty-second park board meeting, uh, we, we were working on the administration building IT server room cooling unit project. A contract for the administration building IT server room cooling unit project is planned to be presented to the park board for approval at the September ninth meeting. Uh, the scope of work for this project includes installation of a second data center cooling unit in the IT server room at the administration building. This new unit will serve as the temporary cooling component for the park district IT network infrastructure with existing cooling, cooling unit kept in place to serve as a backup should the primary, uh, become non-operational. The tenants operate and maintain both cooling units as part of a larger system. So just an update on that project.
Anybody have any, uh, questions or comments on that?
Please, thank you.
Go ahead.
Next one is the construction management services for the north maintenance facility renovation.
So a, uh, construction management services contract for the north maintenance facility renovation project is anticipated to be presented to the park board for approval in September. The scope of work for this project involves much-needed renovations of the north maintenance facility planned in phases in order to minimize disruption of daily operations. The phases include roofing and interior work in twenty twenty-two and site improvements in twenty twenty-three. The construction drawings and permit documents are currently being formulated by the project team in preparation for the upcoming renovation work. Moreover, it is recommended by staff at this time to commission a construction management team to assist with coordinating the bidding phases of work and develop cost estimates for the planned multi-year renovation work for inclusion in the capital budgets. It's important to mention that approach of commissioning a construction management team and the design and permitting phases now is consistent with the timeline filed with developing a central maintenance facility at that park. The construction management services contract is planned to be presented to the board as an expenditure over twenty-five thousand dollars and is exempt, is exempt from the bidding process as defined in park district code. So just an update on that one as well.
Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, Marine Corps flag raising.
Yes, in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, we met with, uh, members of the American Legion to conduct a flag raising ceremony to celebrate the Marine Corps anniversary on November tenth. Um, and the, uh, American Legion has come back and they would like to hold that ceremony again annually on November tenth at the flag poles that are located just east of where the Dan the Light Farm is on the Riverwalk. Uh, so with the location taking place on the Riverwalk, uh, it does require more approval. And so what we'd like to do is bring a resolution to the next meeting, uh, that would basically recognize the Marine Corps anniversary and that, uh, would also authorize a commemorative service, uh, to be held at the flag poles on Riverwalk on November seventh.
Any comments on that? Okay, sounds good. All right, quickly, start with recycling dumpster services.
At the August twenty-sixth board meeting, we will be seeking to renew our contract for recycling and dumpster services in twenty twenty-two with, uh, Groot Inc. We originally signed a board-approved contract with them in twenty twenty, which allowed us for the, uh, virtual, for the option to renew with them for two additional years. The option was picked up in twenty twenty-one and we would like to do so again in twenty twenty-two. Groot's prices have remained static and they have agreed to honor those prices again. Uh, as an organization, uh, we bought Groot for seventy thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars in services in twenty twenty-one and we expect similar needs in twenty twenty-two. We've worked with Groot since twenty seventeen and would look forward to continuing our relationship with them.
Any comments on that one? Okay. Utility vehicle purchase.
So also at the upcoming board meeting, we'll be presenting, uh, for consideration, the purchase of a new twenty twenty-one Toro Workman HSX, the four-wheel-drive utility vehicle with a cab for use on the Riverwalk at a cost of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents. Uh, this u- utility vehicle would replace a twenty-ten John Deere HPX diesel gator that's no longer worth investing time or parts in. Um, procurement of the workman would come via the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing agreement, which is awarded to riders. These heavy-duty vehicles are true forces of workforce for us. Uh, they allow us more mobility and access on the Riverwalk than trucks. Um, they offer higher hauling capacities than many of our competitors or their competitors for project work and transport of our large water tanks. I do want to mention that our sales run past a lot and the delivery could extend into next year. In that event, we will monitor and budget accordingly.
Uh, we had, uh, we had one more, um, item on the list for a plea because there was an emergency, um, request that came in, so.
Right, so I wanted to prompt the board, a unique situation that we're dealing with on the fleet side regarding the purchase of vehicles and equipment. Um, so I'm sure many of you have heard by now, there's a global shortage of semiconductor chips used in items ranging from dump trucks to handheld equipment or electronics. Um, our suppliers are felt the squeeze and we are also victims of the supply shortage. In March, we placed orders for several new vehicles. Delivery dates have been pushed back multiple times and now we've been told that, um, not to expect some of those units to arrive until twenty twenty-two. As we take delivery next year, we have to dip into next year's budget to pay for this year's orders. I wish someone joined in. Okay. Um, so in order to compensate, staff has been working the phone lines, uh, searching for currently in-stock equipment. We plan on acquiring in early twenty twenty-two and deciding to purchase earlier, even as soon as the upcoming board meeting on September ninth. We're hearing from our vendors that equipment is frequently being sold as soon as it's showing up in their systems. Um, so I wanted to give this group a heads up as I don't have an itemized list for discussion this evening. Um, however, we plan to have a place, a plan in place by midweek and we'll have information provided in next week's board packet regarding any potential purchases. So, uh, on that note, near the end of the workday today, uh, fleet staff was able to locate three John Deere, uh, twelve-hundred A ballfield rigs, uh, via one of our cooperative purchase networks at a cost of fifteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars each for a total price of forty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. I was able to discuss things earlier with our finance team earlier today and we determined that we have a unique opportunity to order the rigs, uh, which did appear in our twenty twenty-two budget, uh, as soon as tomorrow. We have the funds available in our twenty twenty-one budget and we can jump around them, uh, right now while they're available. Um, one other thing that I'd like to add, I did hear from a rival vendor today, um, that as of this week, they are expecting to raise, um, prices on all their equipment by eight percent across the board. Um, so with all that said, we'd like to seek a consensus from the board and moving forward with permission to place that order and then formally ratify via our traditional process at the September ninth board meeting.
So what I'd like to do now is just go around, do you agree that we can, um, place the order? We'll ratify it at our next meeting. So, Commissioner Ruffin?
Yes, agree.
Yes. Commissioner, answer.
Yes.
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 Rich?
Good, I'm good.
Okay, and I'm good to, um, go forward with that. All right. Next one is, Rick Carlson. Purchased two Toro e-mastern triplex mowers.
Yes, thank you, um, it's cool. Staff will be presenting, uh, at the September ninth, uh, board meeting for approval, the purchase of two twenty-twenty-one Toro e-triflex green mowers for a total price of one hundred and one thousand, twenty dollars and ninety-four cents. The purchase price of these mowers is from the Amia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract, which is competitively solicit and publicly awarded, providing the district with lower costs for purchasing a big. Uh, these mowers use hybrid power to drive the mower and cutting units, allowing us to reduce our fuel use by up to twenty percent. The hybrid mowers provide several environmental benefits besides less use of fuel, including reduced emissions, less opportunity for hydraulic oil leaks, and a quieter operation, which will be a benefit for our golf course neighbors when our staff is out mowing early in the morning. These mowers replace mowers at both golf courses, one at each, which are fifteen to nineteen years old and have become unreliable and expensive to maintain. To, uh, kind of piggyback on what, uh, Director, uh, Tim was saying, that, uh, we have talked to our suppliers and if we do, uh, make this order in September, they have told us that we could take delivery by the end of the year. So it will be a twenty twenty-one purchase.
Any comments, any questions on that? Oh, okay. Moving on to the next one, which is the, uh, golf course maintenance building water service.
Thank you. Uh, staff will be presenting for the board's approval at the September ninth meeting. A contract for updating the September golf course water service, September golf course meeting is available. The main scope of this project includes the removal of existing plumbing and fire sprinkler pumps, tapping into the city of Neighborhood water main and connecting the new water main to the building's fire protection and domestic water supply. Having a reliable fire sprinklers water supply was the main reason for this project as the well and fire sprinkler pumps have become unreliable and costing their career. With approval, work will begin on this project in September and expected to be completed later this fall.
Any questions on that one? Okay. All right, good evening, Eric Spanish. Gordon.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Yep, that's fine. This is kind of strange because I'm seeing what I'm talking to. Um, but welcome to mid-year, a little bit past. Um, we all can't believe it's going by so fast and, um, seems like we just got started and we're trying to figure out where we're going to be at the end of the year and start working for twenty twenty-two. So, um, what you're seeing up here, um, is a lot of work. Um, each department takes their entire budget and kind of line item by line item goes through and estimates where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. Um, similar, um, maybe not as bad as last year, but similar with everything going on. Um, it's a little bit of a dark board, uh, because things can change so fast. But what we do know, and to caveat, you're going to hear through this presentation tonight that typically we go and compare to budget. We do everything, here's our budget, here's where we think we're going to be. Our budget, because, um, we put it together last year at this time and we're not even open things. We're just starting to go, isn't as relevant as comparing to a normal year. So you're going to hear a lot about comparing results where we are now, where we think we're going to be at the end of the year to two thousand and nineteen is our baseline versus budget. Can tell you from a budget, we think we are going to be in a better position based on where we are now and what we're projecting overall. But when you're really looking at stats and how we're doing, we're going to be going back to two thousand and nineteen. So as the headline there says, uh, we are this year still rebuilding. Um, while you're going to hear about, um, increased participation in some of our areas, we are still not at the level... still not at the levels, both in participation and revenues, of where we were in two thousand and nineteen. In fact, we're about one point six million dollars below on a revenue basis of where we were in two thousand and nineteen, and that's, and that's our, not really our property tax revenues that are, you know, pretty reliable. These are program fees and other things that we're still trying to catch up to. Recreation fees, interest income, as you all know from your personal accounts, has been practically zero this year compared to a normal year. That is way down. Our sales, our rentals, everything that we do with participation is helping to drive that decrease compared to where we were in two thousand and nineteen. So on the expense side, we're about two point three million dollars below where we were in nineteen, and there's a couple of big reasons for that that's tied to the revenues. Contractual services, way below two thousand and nineteen numbers on the expense side because we have lower participation, we have lower costs to provide those programs. We also have part-time wages, we're going to hear about that all night, we've been hearing about it all year. Part-time wages are significantly lower than they were in nineteen, and it's not for a lack of trying, it's where we are right now. And then also a big piece of why we're two point three below is we have golf debt, and for the new commissioners, you were lucky, you weren't around for the years of golf, really had the burden of about eight hundred thousand dollars a year to pay in debt payments for some improvements that were made at the course. So now that they're free of that, we don't have those expenses anymore to compare to two thousand and nineteen. So that's really a high-level overview that I'm going to give, and we're going to pass it off to everyone else so they can get into more details of what's been going on on a program level.
So when we look at facilities, with our facilities, we have the three major facilities that we wanted to highlight this evening, that being Centennial Beach, Fort Hill, and then our golf courses. Some areas we're doing better than expected, in other areas where we're actually below. Starting with Centennial Beach, we are actually performing better than expected at this point. When we look at overall net income, we're looking at net income at the end of the year, projecting it to be at about two hundred and forty thousand net versus two hundred and two in two thousand and nineteen. When we look at memberships, we're actually twelve percent ahead of what our three-year average is for memberships. And a lot of times with our weather-dependent facilities, we will look at three-year averages because it can fluctuate so much with just what the weather is due to the course of the summer months. When I say that we're twelve percent over the three-year average, when we budgeted last year, we budgeted using a number of assumptions, not knowing exactly what two thousand and twenty-one was going to bring with all our programs and facilities. We had budgeted for memberships to be at seventy-five percent of what our three-year average is. And then when we look at overall attendance, attendance right now to date, and we still have two weekends left, is five percent below what our three-year average has been for those coming in the gate at Centennial Beach. So very close to where we've been with our three-year averages. Again, we had budgeted our daily admissions, our attendance at the beach at seventy-five percent for the budget in two thousand and twenty-one. When I say five percent down, that's about forty-nine hundred visitors to the facility. We believe some of that is due to fewer groups coming into the beach. The beach typically serves as a regional camp, field trip destination for a lot of other park districts, we don't have that this year. Our own camps used it, but we didn't do the transportation to the, to the beach. With Fort Hill, we're below expectations right now. The fitness industry as a whole is slowly recovering in many areas. So memberships that we had in two thousand and nineteen just were not back to where we once were. We're about thirteen hundred memberships down from where we were in March of two thousand and twenty. We are seeing growth. At the beginning of this year, we were at about fifty-four percent of what our memberships were at pre-COVID. We are now at about sixty-nine percent of what our memberships were. So it is slowly, steadily climbing back. We had budgeted for this year for Fort Hill to be at seventy-five percent of what our memberships were pre-COVID. Our net income for the facility is right now projected at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand versus in two thousand and nineteen, we had a net for the facility of eight hundred and sixty-six. So a significant difference between a normal year versus what we're working with this year. And then with golf, I'll turn it over to Director Carlson, and he'll speak a little bit about that.
Yeah, as you can see, things at golf have been better than expected. We started this year out kind of not knowing exactly where this year was going to take us. Obviously, last year, we saw tremendous success, but golf had a near monopoly on things as many other recreational opportunities were not available during the pandemic and during restrictions. And with things opening up this year a little bit more, we really didn't know if things were going to pull back with golf or with our participation. But we are pleased to, you know, let you know that things have continued to be very strong with good weather and strong participation across the board with golf. We're up about thirty percent compared to two thousand and nineteen with rounds through the end of July, and across the board, we're seeing really exceptional numbers. Our memberships are up thirty-six percent, our concession revenues are up fifty-three percent, and the driving range revenues as of July thirty-first compared to two thousand and nineteen are up seventy-five percent. So tremendous numbers across the board. We're also seeing a lot of new golfers out there, as you can see from our programming numbers. Our revenues are up twenty-five percent, and we are seeing a significant number of new participants in our programs. Our private lessons are also experiencing positive increase, they're up thirty-six percent so far in twenty, or two thousand and twenty-one. And overall, golf revenues across the board have increased forty-three percent compared to two thousand and nineteen.
As we look at recreation programs in general, again, when we looked at budget for this year, we used a number of assumptions. For our outdoor programs, we budgeted at seventy-five percent of the participation levels that we had in two thousand and nineteen. For our indoor programs, we budgeted at fifty percent for the year. Overall, where we stand right now is about eighty-four percent of what our participation levels were in two thousand and nineteen for the first three seasons of the year, so winter, spring, and summer. That represents about thirty-four registrants, thirty, excuse me, thirty-four thousand registrants within our programs as compared to, for the same timeframe, we had just over forty thousand in two thousand and nineteen. When we look at what we're seeing right now within our programs, it's the outdoor programs where we are seeing tremendous increases from what we had in a normal year. So our aquatics programs, so that being swim lessons at Centennial Beach, up eighty-two percent as compared to what we had in two thousand and nineteen. Athletics overall are up seventeen percent as compared to that year. A big influx right now of registrations within our soccer programs. Fall soccer has one of the largest registrations that we've seen in years in that particular program. Summer camps are up fourteen percent, and then as Director Carlson was mentioning, golf, golf programs are up thirty-seven percent compared to two thousand and nineteen. Where we're seeing the declines in programs or where we've not met those two thousand and nineteen levels is within our indoor programs, and there's a lot of question marks yet as we begin to enter the fall season and go into the winter, as to just what that is going to look like. There's uncertainty with just the overall participation, how many we're going to get in some of our larger programs like our gymnastics program here at, at Fort Hill, and what those future variations might look like as we go into the coming months, and whether or not capacity restrictions begin to come back into play, and just the general public's overall comfort with participating indoors. We continue as a recreation team, continue to look at opportunities to provide those virtual, those hybrid types of programs, as well as do as many activities outdoors as we can. Certainly, that's what we've seen as far as the interest level within the community right now.
The two thousand and twenty-one capital budget consists of almost two hundred capital improvement projects, initiatives, and allowance items. Overall, the implementation of that budget, those projects are, overall, going extremely well, especially with ribbon cuttings, as we all know, with the West Crossland Community Park, which we had earlier in the year. Earlier this month, we had ribbon cuttings at Bright Ridge as well as Brush Hill Parks, and then next month, we have plans for a ribbon cutting of the playground at Commissioners Park. So everything is going extremely well as far as implementation of two thousand and twenty-one capital projects. As identified there, projects deferred in savings, about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so that's where we're at to date. About five hundred thousand dollars of that is related to the north maintenance facility. We intend to shift out the roofing project from this fall to next spring, reason being that we have a shortage of materials right now in the industry. We think to be a better pricing, and we will still look to bid it this year, but we look to implement the work early next year. That, the remaining amount is about three hundred and fifty K. That's just from competitive bid pricing, so all the projects that we bid already this year, we received some really good pricing, as well as some of these lower priority projects that we intend to shift out to next year. But overall, we're looking at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars under that eight point eight million, two thousand and twenty-one capital budget number, so we're doing extremely well at this point.
Staff, you haven't heard anything about this before, right? I love this graphic, except all the pieces are there, and that's the challenge, we don't have all the pieces. You know, I presented information on the challenges that we faced, actually, over the past couple of years attracting and retaining staff. And we addressed this issue, but we haven't been able to resolve it. And we've been doing this by enhancing program benefits, compensation, and expanded marketing propositions. We still struggle to attract applicants, entertain part-time employees, especially in our maintenance operations, food and beverage operations, and program instructors, so much so that the part-time wage budgets are anticipated to finish the year four hundred and eighty thousand dollars below our two thousand and nineteen part-time wage expenses. We're presented with the opportunity to hire new full-time staff positions that are a direct result of our retirements and people separated from the organization, directors, superintendents, and managers, and gun weight, staffing needs, synergies, and potential efficiencies. And this has resulted in organizational structure changes, including moving trades from parks to plan, and moving custodial to trades. And as wonderful as those changes have been, the district can't sustain at our current staff levels. Our staff is dedicated and have continued to step up and take on tasks that have traditionally been executed by our part-time staff, but they're burnt out, and our service levels are diminished. We want to continue a culture where employees feel valued, not one that they want to flee from. So Sue and I have been working with the department directors throughout the twenty-two budget process, and where it makes sense, part-time wage budgets are going to be allocated to full-time wage budgets and then the associated benefits budgets. Some of this work has already occurred and been implemented in two thousand and twenty-one, including at parks, custodial, and police. The district will also be challenged by wage compression issues created by an increasing minimum wage. On January first of twenty-two, minimum wage goes up another dollar to twelve dollars an hour, and it's going to continue to increase. By the end of twenty twenty-five, it's where it's more than fifteen dollars an hour. I'm going to turn it over to Directors Wilson, quickly, and Carlson to provide detail on how the staffing puzzle is having canceling impacts on our custodial service.
Yes, so this graphic just gives an indication as to some of the direct service on the impacts to our residents, to the programs and services that we're able to provide. In the areas of recreation, with program instruction, we've had a number of challenges with securing enough staff in some instances to be able to teach the programs and be able to accommodate some of the wait lists that we're seeing, as well as being able to expand programs, specifically in the area of like gymnastics here at Fort Hill Activity Center. In fact, we have a situation right now where we are, we're working feverishly to find enough gymnastics instructors for our daytime programs that are set to begin here in a couple of weeks, and it's just been a challenge to be able to build those advocates. We've already implemented in some instances wage increases within some of these areas, such as gymnastics, such as recruiting for preschool teachers, so that is something that we will continue to work on. Building maintenance standards. Fort Hill, as you walk through, certainly, you know, being a flagship facility of ours, we constantly hear about how clean it is, and we get comments from the public about how clean it is. However, we're having some areas that are beginning to suffer, and some of our outlined buildings are beginning to suffer as well. In custodial alone, our part-time wage budget right now is projected to be about seventy thousand dollars under budget, and that was just simply we could not get applicants, people to apply to work, and assist during the summer months. So with that, our team that is there, they are out working cleaning the facilities, and we're providing those clean, safe facilities, but not to the levels that we want to be able to, we need to be able to provide to the community.
So on the parks, we're definitely seeing the effects of the stacking challenges. We'll continue to focus on our core services, our mowing, custodial duties, garbage, and program support. However, our labor shortage is making it nearly impossible to meet our department-wide maintenance standards. Unfortunately, we're becoming much more reactive in our maintenance instead of being able to take the proactive approach, and putting out those daily fires makes us operate in a much less efficient manner. We're doing our best to mask some of those shortcomings. You'll notice maybe that we're string trimming along the road in the perimeter of the park, we might skip the inside for a couple of cycles. Our three-year mulching cycles have been lengthened to four or five years. We're severely cutting back on our nutrient plantings, we just can't get back to watering them on a weekly basis. We're behind on our spraying, shrub beds and trails need to be mulched. We're falling behind on a lot of the things that separate our organization from the rest of the pack. Based on the number of three-one-one calls, we're closing in on three hundred, and comments we've been receiving, our residents are starting to notice as well. As industry professionals, we often feel the same. Unfortunately, we're just not able to keep up with the demand. And apparently, one more interesting figure I'd like to share, our park specialists, twos who do much of the hiring, have spent well over two hundred hours on the hiring process this year, and that number does not include any time spent by our administrators, they have four managers. So just wanted to point out that not only are we short hands in the field, but we're also pulling full-time staff away from some of their other normal duties.
At golf maintenance, much like parks and custodial, we've had very limited success with building our full-time and our part-time staff. During the summer months, we were able to kind of band-aid the issue with college age help, but obviously now they've left us and gone back to school, so with limited staff, our service levels have now been reduced. Right now, we are reduced or delaying our start time at both golf courses during the week to allow our staff time to prepare the golf course before the first groups go out. Normally, we start our first groups as early as ten, fifteen minutes after day break. We've pushed that back a half an hour. That's about three tee times at each golf course each day during the week. So it's starting to obviously reduce our service time and our ability to service and service our residents, and it's going to start impacting our revenues also. Also, our F and B operations, we've had a similar situation. We've lost some of our college help in there, and we are starting to reduce our operations there. Our hours are being reduced, removing our start times back in there, reducing our food choices. We'll have less grilling, less prepared food going out, and our on-course beverage service is going to probably be reduced to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday if we'll manage that. But overall, those are also going to start impacting our service and our revenues.
Okay, I'll come back to this top bullet in a second. Just real quick here, for two thousand and twenty-two, certainly completing the community survey and market analysis, for the new commissioners and certainly for the commissioners that have been here and attended, will tell you that this is a huge deal for us as a community to get out there and to really gauge what the community expects for us to deliver to them. Sometimes they don't like when we say that's really cool and that'd be great, but it weighs a lot of money, and we just can't afford to do that. But certainly, we take all the information, and recently Commissioner Gibson and I transferred emails, a gentleman talking about acquiring the property in one hundred and nineteen to not fifty-nine, and that will certainly be, you know, part of the analysis, so that doesn't just go into the circular then. We certainly look at everything, and then we'll come out and serve the community survey. Three-year restriction plan, again, is a guide, and certainly an important one. We'll also kick off the master plan, and then certainly another big one is redesigning for parks.org website. I want to close, before we open up to any questions, with bullet number one, investing additional resources to attract and retain personnel. I'm showing my age, but I've been in public service now forty-one years, long time. Wondering if somebody who's been on the service, I don't know. And I have seen burnout before. I have been a victim of burnout. I have been a victim of burnout. Some of my former bosses always used to tell me, if you want something done, give it to a busy person. Because, you know, it's a kid. We've certainly had and still have very busy people working for the neighborhood park district, but they are burnt out. We are at burnout, and we cannot operate this rate anymore. We just can't. Does that mean that people are picking up and leaving and aren't going to come to work tomorrow? The answer is no. These are committed professionals that will continue to do the job. But it is unfair for me, as your executive director and for this community, to continue to push people to a limit that is impacting them not only physically but mentally. So this isn't like one of those things where I've seen presentations made before, well, if you don't, you know, grant us this, people are going to die. No, I don't operate that way. But I will tell you that this fall, we're going to come up with some ideas to streamline some positions from part-time to full-time, enhance wages across the board. It is not going to be insanity, like we're not just going to say, here's the opportunity, let's just add ten dollars or twenty dollars an hour. No, that's not what we're going to do. But I think you need to hear from me. We are at that point, besides the fact that things are not getting done. And as recently as this weekend, you know I get calls seven days a week on the weekends. That's part of my job element, so it's fine. This call was a person that was extremely upset that there was no soap and that they don't have soap dispensers. So to that person, that's a big deal, and it is a big deal. But that's an example of what we just are not getting done. We just don't have the legs, the people, right now to keep up and to deliver to this community what they expect. It's a high expectation community. Should be. But I'll just close with that, that I think, not a thing, I know, we cannot continue to operate this way.
Well, that concludes the mid-year preview, and we will open it up.
Everybody happy?
Yeah, on that note, and we'll open it up for any questions that you may have about any information.
I got one question this morning, I'll clear up. Where do we advertise mostly our job offerings? I know they have one site, but where else do they go that people can find them?
Answer is coming right up.
As soon as you post something on our website, it also hits indeed.com, and it really depends on the positions that we're recruiting for. We've been, is your website being that website that we just put the park specialists to?
I don't see it, I'm one of landscapers.
Illinois Landscapers Association?
Contact the town board.
So we're looking at those opportunities too. We have the job fair that we do annually. This year was a little bit different in that it was really much later into the year, we didn't have many opportunities where it made sense to promote them, but we do that in January typically every year. We offer an employee referral program. So if they refer someone, they get an initial payment of fifty dollars, and then if they stay late, you receive their, after sixty days, you receive the rest of that. We're trying anything and everything. We've worked with Sam's team extensively with Facebook posts, some of our Christina McBride... I'm operating at Goseley. Christina McBride, it has had some luck. She uses her association's newsletter to attract some staff here at Fort Hill. So it really just depends. And like I said, we use marketing quite a bit too. We've got banners that we put up strategically, and we've got our facilities at different times of the year. So yeah, whatever makes sense for the position, anything we can leverage.
Okay, so, and this isn't just a park district problem, but there's a staffing shortage everywhere.
Yep.
So maybe I'm asking some questions. I mean, part of it has been generous unemployment and stimulus checks, but I'm wondering, what are we competing against? Are people still getting, don't people want to go back to work at some point? What's the alternative, or what are we competing against? Is it unemployment or other opportunities or?
I think it's all of that, to be honest. You know, we're seeing things, around fifty-nine, there's a landscaping business, they're advertising for eighteen, fifteen hours, which is basically for our part-time thirty-plus positions that we rely on quite a bit while they're offered some time off benefits and health insurance. The wages can't compete with that. And right now, what we're seeing is people are really more money-driven. The benefits are really secondary, you know, that folks or the competition's wages. We'll see what happens later in September, if we start getting more applicants or not. Yeah, it's kind of a little bit of everything.
Any other comments?
I just happened to reach out to maybe other park districts in other states that might have been more successful, because if this is the issue with unemployment, would say Florida, Tennessee, other states that ended their emergency unemployment early, are they also seeing staffing shortages? I'm just, I, like you said, I think the number of things that are compounding onto this, but if we've had a park district that is successful at hiring applicants, have you taken a look at any of those?
I actually have a Facebook group, it's Parks and Rec Downright, and there are some things that keep popping up, people are still having those challenges. I'm hoping to have some conversations at the national conference with people from other states to see what they've been able to do. You know, we know that there's other aquatics facilities in our area and communities that are already closed here, so they just don't have life hearts and staff. Yeah, it's very, it's frustrating. And I think I mentioned before too, they each group that some of these positions that we have available might be kind of a natural fit. They're, seem to enjoy more gig work. Yeah, they're doing the DoorDash, they're doing Uber, all that kind of stuff. Because they see a need for some cash, they make it, and they spend it. They don't really want to commit to us that way. I don't know, like that, but.
Yeah, I think the national conference is coming at a good time. I guess it would be a great conversation to have.
Absolutely.
There with other, both commissioners and professionals.
Hey, President Todd?
Yes. Go ahead, Rich.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I know I've made this point many, many times before, but, you know, just to just widen the conversation in here, and that fitness memberships are down, employees. I mean, can we, can we run some kind of promotions where any new employees that are on board with an experienced time get a free three-month fitness membership, six-month personal fitness membership, and then basically start to better utilize the assets that we have? If somebody can save on having to buy a lifetime membership or export membership and got capacity anyway, are there others created like this that we could leverage the assets of a park district to create some buzz around why you want to work for the park district as opposed to everybody else hiring on the planet right now? I don't know if there is any thought on that, but what I would do?
In early two thousand and twenty, I don't remember if it's February or March, we did update Personnel Policy oh-six-oh-one, which is our programming and facilities benefits policy for staff, and expanded the benefits offered to part-time staff significantly. But we've not seen the utilization rates, even though it has been communicated to the staff, which is, it's the money, and that got a lot of these positions, unfortunately.
I think sometimes with the age group that would be appropriate for somebody is because they give work, can it work for people who aren't that age group? I mean, there are still people who do have families and do have, need to make money as well, that you can somehow market to them more directly.
We can try all different things.
Yeah.
I'm like, not trying to criticize, but you don't have a thought of everything, I'm just curious like, what is that, or what?
We recognize that the groups that we have specifically traditionally targeted aren't producing the applicants, so we have been trying the other options. Facebook is kind of a big one, because as my children tell me, I am old, and that's who's on Facebook. So we have tried different things as far as imprint. I know, you know, it worked successfully, but we may try to leverage some of those opportunities, and we'll continue to do so. One of the things to, so Lisette on my team does a lot of recruiting, and she's been participating in some of ours with our peers. And some of the things that they've thrown out is potentially trying to partner with other park districts, if they have a part-time position and another one has a part-time position, and we can somehow share a person. Been looking at our organizational structural and aren't sure that we can implement something like that, but we are looking at every possible alternative. And do you think of anything else? Is that enough?
We try TikTok.
According to my kids, that's a problem now, too, that I'm on TikTok, so.
All right, any other comments or questions? Okay, I guess we have some fun, but thank you. The next regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners, July September ninth, at two twenty-one at seven PM here at Fort Hill Activity Center. More to the fore for the students. Move to June, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Any suggestions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.